Good evening. Welcome to the public hearing of April 25th, 2013. The Ambulance Association has approached the town and asked the selectmen in appropriate timely manner to consider putting a warrant article on this year's warrant to ask the town if they would approve the ambulance association becoming a town department and not being a private entity anymore. So tonight is a public hearing to gather information from the ambulance association, and they are here tonight to answer questions. And Denise will open with an opening statement, and then anybody that has any questions is welcome to come up to the microphone and ask.
Hi, I'm Denise DeAngelis, and I'm the Acton Rescue Chief, and I'm also a firefighter on the fire department. And what we're asking is the town to think about, well, we'd like the town to take over the rescue so that we would be municipal like the fire department and be all under We gave a few different budgets to the warrant finance as for some ideas, as well as we're just trying to find ways that we can serve our community better because we're only getting probably ninety percent of our calls, and ten percent of our calls we're not responding to because our members are at their full-time jobs and not around town during the weekdays. So we're just looking for ways to improve our responses and take better care of our community. We did just get a new ambulance. The old one...
Used.
A new used ambulance. It's five years newer, and it's in really good shape, and it should last us at least another five years. We're very pleased with this new ambulance, and we got it for very minimum. Shapley was gracious to sell us it. Any questions?
The ambulance was bought from funds from the ambulance association, correct?
Yes. We paid cash for the ambulance.
And is the ambulance on the road now?
Yes, it is.
Is it running? Okay. Anybody have any questions about combining the ambulance or having the town take over the ambulance association and it become a town department?
Can you push that away from me a little bit, the microphone? There you go. Thank you.
I am interested in finding out, are you going to combine the ambulance association people with the fire department? Are you going to try and maintain them as two separate operations? Having been through this, I, my feeling is the ambulance people should be moved into the fire department. Everybody should work under one executive. I was involved about ten years ago. We set up a brand-new department in Tonopah, Arizona. We had two factions. One wanted it to be all volunteer. One wanted it to be full-time. We covered 250 square miles, and I felt strongly that in order to provide the kind of service that we should have out there, it should be a full-time department. I know we can't do that here, but I think you have to look at the fact that the day will come when you will have to do it. I know the ambulance people are trying very hard, but I know they've had problems at certain times of day in manning an ambulance, and there's no question about it. It becomes a problem. When, it used to be, when I first became involved in a volunteer department, the outfit I worked for understood that if I got called, I went. Doesn't work that way anymore. If you want to keep a job, you have to be there all the time. So I think it, my feeling would be that everybody should be under the fire department. I'm sure the fire department's having as much trouble keeping people. You know, you've got to have, what, 190 or 200 hours before you can allow a person to go on a fire scene? And the ambulance people, we started out with six, seven full-time people and nineteen volunteers. And in two and a half years, the nineteen volunteers, five of them had become full-time full paramedics, and everybody else was, had some training. But it's, you know, I think it's something you're going to have to look at closely. But I think for the benefit of the town, that combining, so that they're all fire personnel, and then offering training so that everybody is cross-trained at some point is the best way to go.
Okay. You want to hang on until she answers the question, in case you have some more? You want to answer the question? If I understand you correctly, you're wondering if, what they're proposing is that the ambulance now becomes part of the fire department under one chief?
Or you just ask it to become another, you know, division in the town?
Ninety-nine percent of us are both on fire and rescue. Ninety-nine percent of us are trained both as firefighters and as EMTs, paramedics, critical care, and first responders. Being a full-time fire and rescue chief, I know just alone as a rescue chief, the state has implemented so many laws, so much more paperwork, so many, much more training and everything. I could not see, and this is only my personal opinion, but I could not see a volunteer being both chief of fire and rescue and in charge of both departments. That would take a lot of hours. And we're asking to be, we, like I said, I'm on both, and ninety-nine percent of us are on both, but we're asking to come under one roof, under one management, which is the town of Acton, and work side by side. The fire chief and the rescue chief, myself, he can, you can speak if you want, work very good together, and we go, when we go to a scene, fire and rescue go to just about every scene there is. It's not, well, I'm on the rescue and I'm not fire, I'm this. It's where do I go, where am I needed most? So it, we don't have that kind of, any issue like that, and we don't have the issues and we don't want issues. We just want to be, if we become municipal and get under insurance and stuff, there's money that can be saved because then maybe we can pay some people to be on call or pay per diem, like the other towns have per diem. And what we're looking for is the best way to serve our community. And do you want anything to say?
Any other questions?
Dennis Long, I'm not trying to take away from the value of our rescue or our fire department. And I understand times are what they are. And I also understand that when we, if the town decides to bring this as one, it's going to cost us a considerable amount more money.
Would you like to know what their proposals are on those costs?
I saw the thing Saturday...
Oh, that's right, too. I forgot.
And, I mean, I remember they said that the ambulance brings in about $60,000 a year in revenue. And obviously, it's going to cost more to have one person in charge of it all. I mentioned that Saturday, and Pete said more than likely, you know, that's the way it's going to turn out in the end, you know? There's two things here. One, I don't know if we put this to vote in June, if we could have a, an agreement, I guess, to have talks with the town of Shapley so that if we can join rescue together, it would be a big savings for both towns. And that was one of the recommendations that we had from that study done a few years ago, was to work with other towns. A lot of towns are doing it, a lot bigger towns than us are doing it. And I guess, you know, the people in the town have always been very, very supportive of the ambulance, and they've always been very supportive of the fire department. And, well, they've always been supportive about the school and things like that, too. But now I'm going to talk from a personal perspective. There's a few things that the ambulance does different now than they used to do. It used to be, for example, if you had to use the ambulance and you had insurance, and the insurance paid the bill, that's what they accepted for using the ambulance, you know, that covered the cost. And the way things are done now, this couple was telling me, this elderly couple, they needed the ambulance, and they have Medicare, and they also have a supplemental insurance, which also picked up part of the bill. And then they still had to pay another $200 out of pocket. And that's hard for a lot of people. I would like to think that if the town does take over the ambulance, that they would make some kind of an agreement with the insurance companies to accept whatever the insurance pays, like, you know, some of your doctors have agreements, the hospitals have agreements, that you're charged whatever, they accept whatever the insurance will pay for that service. Not always, but quite often it helps people. And the other thing is, from a financial point of view, a personal financial point of view, I've been paying taxes in this town, property taxes, for forty years. And the last year or so has been the first time in forty years that my name's been in the town report for unpaid taxes. There's a lot of people, as you know, in that boat. There's people that used to own quite a bit of land, and people would say, "Well, what do you expect? Look at all the land they own." So you turn around because you can't afford it anymore, and you sell a house lot. And so somebody comes in, they build their house, and they got 2.3 kids, and it costs us as taxpayers $30,000 a year to put them through school. And consequently, the taxes go up even more. And then you've got to get rid of some more land and start over again. And I just think that in the selectmen, it was very, very hard to try to keep expenses down, and I really appreciate, you know, the work you've done. But I just think that for a while, maybe we need to sit back and just kind of accept what we've got without costing us any more money and get rid of some of our debt and bills and things that we can't avoid and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. You guys want to comment on that?
Yes.
Don, what comment?
I'm Don Wallet. I'm the Assistant Rescue Chief and President of the Ambulance Board at this time. As far as anybody not being able to pay their bill after insurance or if they have no insurance, all they have to do is write us a letter stating that they're in need or have other obligations at this time, and we will forgive the debt. We are not for profit. We don't come after everybody for money.
Well, I appreciate that, but there's also people, especially older people, that have a sense of pride, and they will sit there with a sweater on and turn the heat down because they have to pay, pay something, and they're not going to ask or even imply that they can't pay it because their pride won't let them. It's just like people that, elderly people who are having trouble, especially, you know, the price of groceries and, and heat and stuff like that. We have the food pantry, and I know many, many people that will sit there and go without eating rather than swallow their pride and come out and ask for some assistance. And I appreciate what you're saying, and I'm not just saying you don't, but I also know the people that will pay regardless if they have the bill.
I also go over the billing very meticulously, and we have switched to a new billing agency that will not be mailing out any more after the insurance is paid. That will be the final bill. Whatever the insurance pays, that is all. We had a company from Massachusetts. They took it upon themselves to send people letters saying if they don't pay, they'll be going to collections, et cetera. And we no longer do business with them.
See, that was my point, and this is what was happening.
We're using a main company that's, well, to me, it's local, it's within six hours. And they've been very good to us, and they fully understand they're from a small town. They also run a rescue up there, husband and wife, and they completely agree with us, you know? Medicare and Medicaid are not getting any cheaper as far as their payments. They gave us a whopping one and a half percent interest and then increased Medicare by 1.7. Where's the savings? It's another 2% out of the poor people's pocket. So I go over the billing. If I see something that's not correct, especially if it says insurance is paid, I call them, I tell them, "Close it." And I hadn't received anything since October. Was when we got rid of them?
January is when we started with Higgins.
Right. And October was when we got done with the address company.
ComStar.
ComStar. So I hadn't seen any paperwork for two or three months out of these people. I recently got what we call the bucket list, which is what goes back until 2010, some of the people that are on the list. And anything more than a year old, we are not legally allowed to collect. Any other questions?
Paul. Paul Point. As Dennis mentioned, or I think a couple of folks have mentioned, we did have some discussions along these lines when, when the budget was being presented last week or this past week for the town budget. And I have the pages that we were given that had various options. Before I get into this, is, is it likely that there will be further, one or more further hearings before this comes up, before the town, whenever that happens to be? Or is this it? In other words, how in-depth do I need to be in anything that I may have mild questions on? I understand that if this process goes on long enough, a fair amount of this will be answered in time, and I don't need to know right now, but I just want to need to know how much time to burn at this point on things that theoretically won't be answered later.
My suggestion is you bring up everything you have tonight because we approached this two years ago, and there were so many questions at the public hearing that we felt we weren't ready to go, so we tabled it. And then it took, it's two years later now, and definitely a new board compared to who was on the board two years ago, and they're coming back to us again. So when I said they came to us in a timely manner, what we require now is everybody that wants to be on the warrant, whether it be a charity or a special project for the road committee or something like that, then they have to have it to us by June 30, January 30th. So they came and approached us by January 30th. This is our first public hearing. If there's enough questions that aren't answered, because it is a nonprofit, not part of the town that's coming in and asking us to do something, we, we as a board cannot spend any money to go into researching this and making it happen this year. So if at the end of this hearing tonight there isn't enough information to go forward, then the board's selectmen will not put it on the warrant this year, and we'll ask the ambulance association to go back and spend some more time on it and then try it again next year. Or we could always do a special town meeting if they came in, say, November or something like that, and say, "Okay, we're ready. Here's, here's what we want to do. Here's all the costs. Here's all the answers to all the questions that came from the public hearing. We'll have another public hearing at that time." But with the time, with where we are now in the budget process, and the town meeting coming up quickly and with timelines, we also have another public hearing coming up on the planning board, there is not a lot of time to hold several public hearings. So my suggestion to you is to ask everything that you need to ask tonight, which will help us make a decision whether we're going forward this year.
Fair enough. Thank you. All right. I'll try to stay fairly targeted here, just to hit some bullet items that are perhaps of concern or in general question. So we have this merger that is proposed, and one of the things that was discussed at that workshop this week, and which received, I believe, a fairly round set of acclaim as being a good idea, is having the rescue of Acton merged in some capacity with the rescue of Shapley. I think it would, it would do both departments certainly financial good, manpower good, and I didn't hear anything, there may certainly be, and time will tell, there may certainly be some negative aspects of that, but I didn't hear any, any of those at, at that workshop, and it seems like a good idea. In order to make that happen, that the, the ambulance association would need to be part of the town because they cannot pursue that while they're a private entity. So that's sitting there.
And that's because the Shapley Department is part of the town already.
So we cannot mix and match those capacities. Okay. So I have this paperwork here, and we were given like, you know, maybe four different possibilities ranging from two licensed people on, on call, actually in-house 24 hours a day, is that it? All the way through to the kind of low end. And my question is, is this low end, which happens to be $123,450, this is all on-call? Is that correct? And does that resemble what is happening now?
The low end?
Yes.
The low end represents, it would be run like the fire department, and when people responded, they'd get a stipend just the same way as the fire department. It's not a guarantee that somebody's in town, but if they do, are in town, it's just like the fire department.
Okay. So which of these options is how it's currently running?
The lowest? Actually, none of them because right now, the responders get, they get $2.50 to respond to a call, whether it takes one hour or six hours. To transport a patient, they get $5, and this is a fuel card incentive. So the most they can get is $50, and they get a fuel card for $50. It doesn't even pay for their fuel or gas or anything. People have taken their own money out of their pocket to cover the town. And an average rescue call is basically at the minimum three hours because of all the paperwork and the computer stuff and the patient care.
The transportation, however, is, is a, an ambulance owned by the association, correct?
It's a 9/11 service, yes.
So, so it's not like the, the person who's responding is using their private vehicle with their private gas and doing this, correct?
They are. They are using their own private vehicles. Most of them, wherever the scene is, whoever's the closest goes direct from their home to, or wherever they are to the scene. One person or a couple of people, if you have to go by the police fire station, they go to the fire station, get the ambulance, and then go to the scene. And there is nobody manning the fire station, whether it be, I should say, public safety, whether it be the fire department or the rescue, there is nobody manned there. People have to, if it's in the middle of the night, get out of bed, take the pajamas off, put on the clothes, go out the door, get the ambulance, you know, punch in the code, start the truck up, pull it out, either wait for a crew, because if you have just like one person, that's not a crew. You can't do patient care and drive the ambulance at the same time. So if you do all that and you still, it's only one of you, then you have to call mutual aid, whichever the spot is, whether it's on Acton Ridge, we would call Newfield. If it was down towards the Canal Road, we would call Wakefield. We would just like to be able to not have to do that, and we are just trying to find a way to improve our response times and get people, our own people taking care of their own community so that we don't have to bother the other towns. We're just trying to find a way to serve this community to the best. And I myself, every time I go on a call, I'm like, "Well, what if I'm that person?" I always put myself in their shoes, and I want whatever, you know, for me is the same for them. I'm going to treat them like it, they were me. So I'm just trying to find a way to make this all the best we can do. I want to say, "Yes, I'm doing the best we can." And right now, I cannot say, "Yes, we're doing the best we can" because I need responders. I need people showing up.
Well, under those circumstances, I'll take the opportunity to commend the volunteers that do this day in and day out. I'm somewhat surprised that we have the response that we do have, and it's a reflection of the dedication of the people that are, that are doing this. I mean, they're, they're bringing training, which is not an easy thing, to the table, and they make the difference in many cases between life and death, and they're doing it essentially unheralded and unpaid. So kudos. Having said that, so we have multiple towns that have this same task. Is there a model that's out there that seems like it's working and that it's sustainable that is not part of what we were given, you know, as possibilities? In other words, is there something that maybe could be pursued that is not being pursued at this time as an option?
We can look further, do more studying. We've done a lot of studies. We did studies a couple of years ago. And suggestions, the biggest problem right now, too, is so many hours to become an EMT that a lot of people don't have the time. And then the EMTs we have are working, and we have people working in Portland, so even when they go do their job there, by the time they get home, they're tired. And, you know, maybe if we put a few dollars in their pocket to say, "Can you help take care of your community?", maybe they could help us out more, or maybe we'll attract more. Because people are going where the money is. I know the town of Goodwin Mills, they have two live-in students and one of our, one live-in student, I'm sorry, that they live at that fire station and they go to school from there, and their time is, they're bored, they pay by serving that community. So there's live-in students. There's, North Berwick now has like a, they have a per diem, like you work, like Wells has per diem. You work so many hours, you know, that it's like an on-call. They go there and serve so many hours. It may not be a, it's not a full-time job, so per diem, they're not paying, you're not paying benefits like health benefits and all those things, but you're paying them to be there, and it's like a part-time job. There's things like that, and anything and everything. We can look it all over again, or we can leave it as it is. I mean, the ambulance is not going to go under. If this stays like this, we are thriving now, and this past year, after a lot going on and a lot of change of hands, we're starting to make the money back. We've, you know, changed hands for billing and everything, and we're starting to see the money. What we're hurting in is the ambulance board. We have positions, and we need fresh people to come in and help, help us find ways to fundraise because most of us are on the board as well as the fire and the rescue. So talk about burning, you know, all the time. You're just there all the time, working hard. I'd like to see fresh people come in and say, "I want to be on the ambulance board. I want to help raise funds so we can buy a brand-new ambulance next time." Or new equipment. I'd like to get a hydraulic stretcher. I mean, people kill their backs having to lift people up on the stretcher. They have hydraulic stretches, and they're like $20,000. So we want to be able to get new equipment. Any suggestions? This is, the role we're taking is because this is the role we feel... This is, the role we're taking is because this is the role we feel would be the best.
Thank you. So which one of these options here, in terms of support and response and service to the town, would you feel is the closest match, since none of them exactly match the model that's being used now? And, and my next question is going to be, okay, with that dollar amount, how does that compare with your perception of what your budget currently is? So I'm, I'm trying to come at this from the financial side of it to say, you know, okay, we have the service and then we have the finances and how do they equate? You know, do we have better service for a better buck or do we have a better service for more bucks? Or, you know, just, just to get a feel for what you're getting for what you're giving?
We have, I have not lived by a budget in quite a few years. I've written them up, but it's always, you know, we got to watch our pennies and cents. That building across the street, the new ambulance building, I mean, has become a thorn in people's sides and that building was approximately ten thousand dollars worth of donations and it was over a hundred thousand dollars that was taken out of the ambulance fund that should have been going to a new ambulance. So we have been picking up and trying to move forward. So I do not buy things unless we need them. I am at the bare minimal all the time. We don't have any luxuries over there and we just try to do the best we can and we're finally just starting to pick up and see the money come back. So we're doing really good and it's really turned around the last two years, I'd say, or at least the last year. So I can't say, well, this budget is the best. I mean, to me, it's what does the town want? Do they want somebody over there that could hop in a, a truck within five minutes and get to somebody's home probably in at least fifteen minutes sooner than it would be or twenty or half hour sooner? If you have two people or if you even do on per diem, so people are switching off and you're not paying all the insurances and every, like you pay insurance, but I mean the, you know, how you have to give medical insurance if you work so many hours a, a week. It's, you got two people, then you can respond right away. You have one person, they can start responding and then whoever is around in town that is available, they can meet them on scene. It would, anything would increase the time and the response.
So there is no budget per se? I assume somebody is keeping track of money in some fashion, but there is no budget per se, therefore that second question is essentially a nonsensical question because nothing to compare with these numbers. Is that a true statement? Okay. So then backing up a little bit to the service itself. You have a feel, and I know that you've expressed concern about the service that's being provided that may not in all cases be adequate. And how does that compare with the proposals here in terms of what is expected? In other words, are any of these things expected to be more of same or are all of these expected to be better than what is happening now?
I'd say it's better than what's happening now because we did put in for a stipend and I think, you know, fire calls, they still struggle, but still fire gets better responses than rescue. And the difference between that is a stipend and not a stipend.
Plus the other thing on the budget that's added on to this stuff over the years, like she said, without the monies, they've just been struggling to, to go forward. This budget also includes maintenance on the equipment, maintenance on the ambulance, which we never had a budget for before. We waited till it broke, then we fixed it. Gets a lot more expensive that way and that's the reason why the ambulance had to be replaced like it did. Just wasn't being maintenance like it needed to. We had no money to, or they had no money to do that. So they're thinking ahead, foresighting, keeping up the snout and trying to go forward with this versus continuously going down like it had been. However, it's starting to come back, I feel now.
Our expenses on, you know, being conservative and everything, our expenses last year was approximately sixty-one thousand dollars. And in two thousand eight, it was fifty-eight thousand. In two thousand eleven, it was like sixty-two thousand. So our expenses run between fifty and seventy.
And how does that compare with your, with your income?
Our income is usually more, it covers all that.
So it's not really a factor of, of, we're not, we're not squeaking by in terms of just making, paying the bills. It's more of a factor of how do we make the service better?
It's how do we make the service better and as well as, I mean, there's opportunities. Can you imagine if we could respond to every single one of our calls and we have, would have more transports? Now, I didn't tell you is, when we go to respond to your home and you say, I'm okay, or we evaluate you and you don't want to go to the hospital and the doctor we get on the phone says, it's okay, they can stay home, we don't make a dime. When we go to your home like that, the only time we charge a fee is when we're transporting a person to the hospital. So every time we go to a motor vehicle crash or fire or, you know, sick person at home just doesn't feel right and wants to be checked, it's not costing that person a penny. They're not getting billed for anything. The only time we do bill is when we transport a patient to the hospital.
I added to that, if you get the ambulance out on more calls, you're making more money and that's who we're having the troubles.
And is that same concept expected to be carried forward if, if this becomes a town department, same? In other words, how much, how much is the patient going to see in terms of, or you may, you may or may not even know this at this point, in terms of differences in services, in terms of differences in, you were talking a little bit about billing before, you're talking now a little bit about service. How much of that is expected to change? And I understand that some of that is going to depend on which of these options is chosen, but are there any immediate expected changes? Oh gee, we're going to be charging for every run that we do. Were, anything in terms of that, that, that might affect someone's decision to say, yeah, that, that sounds good to me, let's do the merger or no, I don't think that's a good idea because?
No, we're more about serving the community. We're not more about how can I make more money to do this. We're more about if we can find a new way and refresh things, how can we get to your house sooner? You sit there and calling, you're like, I feel like I'm going to pass out and you send an ambulance. So you're sitting there, ten minutes, fifteen minutes. Well, maybe they made it to the fire station by now, then another fifteen minutes. Instead, if we can find a way to keep people more around or get them stationed over there, even part-time, then, hi, I'm not feeling well, I feel really dizzy. Okay, we'll be on our way. We call nine-one-one, of course. So then we're getting that truck out of that building at least fifteen, twenty minutes sooner. Do you want to sit there on the phone for forty-five minutes, which is not uncalled for? I mean, you could hear that happen. Or do you want to sit there and wait ten, fifteen minutes instead of the half hour, forty-five minutes?
The goal is patient care quicker.
So same people, same mindset, same premise, just sort of different underlying structure?
Municipal.
But again, to try to give them the incentive, because we have a lot of people on our department that works per diem, hell, they're going to go where the money is. Again, they're struggling like everybody else. They need to make money. So they're not going to hang around here for hours and waiting for a call, but then go somewhere else to make money, to help other citizens instead of our own citizens.
Okay. So with any of these-
It's our own people to work and stay with our own community and help us out.
Sounds like a good, you know, certainly a good goal. So with any of these options, do you see that being an improvement in, from what is happening now?
Outstanding myself.
Because otherwise, these would not have been put forth as options if it was going to be same old, same old, I assume. I guess I really only have two more questions, unless I think there's more. Which does happen. The, the premise of merging Acton and Shapley. Would you take it as pretty much a foregone conclusion that because it does seem to be a rather positive development, if in fact it does occur, that it is highly likely, I won't say a guarantee, but highly likely that that would be pursued if in fact the, the Acton Ambulance Association did merge with the town? That, that would be a logical next step to improve service and improve bang for the buck in, in the ambulance service?
Well, that's at the, oops, sorry. That's at the chief's level at this point. Obviously, it needs to be at the town's, rather than-
Right. Well, and, and of course, it's probably going to go before the town as well, but, but that would be pursued is, is my question, not necessarily that it would happen for whatever reason.
I actually have a good relationship with Peter Cotrea, the rescue chief over in Shapley, and he, he and I did the work for us to be able to get the ambulance we have, we just got. And I actually told him, I said, you know what? I said, I should just put Shackton on the side of this ambulance and we could already be one step closer. And I mean, he and I get along and the two towns really, like our rescue and their rescue work a lot together because sometimes they're coming over here and sometimes we're going over there. So I think if we were municipal also, our chances would even be better and it would not be unheard of. And I think we all get along enough that we could try to work something out.
And we now have the police service as a, as a model.
Right.
You know, if that works, it's encouraging. Okay. In terms of maybe taking this in baby steps, if we were to, as a town, say, okay, yeah, let's do this and we like this, we'll, we'll lowball you for the moment, this low-end model, which happens to be, and I think I mentioned like one, what's it, one thirty-three?
One thirty-six.
Hundred and thirty-three. Yeah, we changed it.
Yeah, one thirty-six, four fifty.
Yeah, it was one twenty-six, four, it's one thirty-six, four fifty.
Ooh. Yeah, one twenty-six, but then at the, at the hearing, or excuse me, at the workshop, you changed the stipends?
From twenty to thirty.
Okay. So the total number is one twenty-six instead of the one twenty-three that I thought-
It's one, it should be one thirty-six.
Oh, excuse me. I, I changed the wrong number. Thank you. So, okay, so one thirty-six. Okay, thank you. So if we went in at the low end, you know, to just get something in place and moving and if the town at some point said, hey, we're looking for even more service, presumably they wouldn't do that because they haven't done it already, but who knows? Then we conceivably could work up to a different model if the fin, the funding changed, the model could change and we could come up with different ways of doing things.
Yep.
Well, so, so being a municipal organization, they have chances for, I don't know what the name of the grant is, but to help out with hiring a full-time person to start off with as well, kind of like the sheriff's department did.
Safer grant.
Safer grant. So it'll be a small hit at first for several years and then you pick up half of that.
Thank you. And there was one more question, which I am not clicking on at the moment. It had to do with, oh, yeah. Okay, so here we are at this part of the process. This question has kind of gone around the barn a few times and has been, you know, gone back for more work a few times. And so I'm certainly hearing that, you know, why we would want to move forward would be increase in service and, and perhaps have a, a really viable financial model. It's up, certainly up to question whether the town at large would actually be saving money to go forward or not, because right now they're not directly paying for ambulance service. So, you know, they will judge that, you know, at the polling booth as they see fit. But certainly an increase in service. So we have the positive sides of things. Is there, and I won't go into whatever the, the sticking points were, either in the past or now, as far as why those who don't want to move forward are not moving forward. But would you say that it is reasonable that, that the, the atmosphere now is such that it's an improvement on what has happened in the past and we have a very good and valid reason to move forward and it's not likely that, whatever those old reasons were, that they're going to be coming up again? And I know we're talking just likelihood, not, not guarantees, but I mean, is it a good move to be moved, from your perspective and, and perhaps for the rest of the board? If there is, there is a board, correct?
Yep.
Are, is there general agreement to be moving forward for good and valid reasons? I guess is my question.
Yes, there is. When the ambulance association was originally started, I believe it was nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty-one, it was to serve the townspeople of Acton with the service that they no longer had because Sanford said, we're done, we're not going to be able to transport anymore, we're too busy. And that's when the board started and that's when the association became. Over the years, things have changed. You know, we're a lot busier than we were back in nineteen eighty. And we're just trying to bring everything up to speed and move forward as progress goes. I mean, I, next ten, fifteen years, there'll probably be a fire station, three more fire stations in town here. We don't know. Population is not shrinking, that's for sure.
The ambulance board also would be able to, without having to look at, you know, watch the rescue and, you know, fun, well, we need this and that and this and that. Instead, the ambulance association, they would not go away, the board would still be there, maybe we'll bring in more, we're hoping to bring in more blood and ideas and have more fun with it, raising funds and then saying, here, we're giving you this so you can have a brand-new stretcher. Here, we're giving you this, you know, so you can have a new piece of cutting apparatus to cut open vehicles or things like that. The board would serve just to raise funds for those special projects and not have to be worried about the rescue squad and are we going to be able to do this or that for them? You know, I think it, it just would be better for the board and it'd be more healthy for the board to be able to just focus on fundraising. And I think that we need more people in the community because it is very taxing to have so many people on the board that are also on the fire and also on the rescue. So we're running a squad, we're running a fire department and we're also throwing our time in as board members to raise funds. And I just think, you know, let's spiff it up and try to make it better.
Is it your intention or, or thought that, that should it be a town department, it would still, there would still be some element of additional fundraising to offset taxation?
Yes.
So it wouldn't just be a straight, this is our budget, this is, it's all gross. Here it is, here's, you know, here's what the town's going to be paying in taxes.
Yep.
So there would still be an offset?
Yep.
And I think this is the final question. Assets. Is it your thought that assets would go into the custody of the town, this sort of ambulance, the building, whatever else is there, equipment, would be a wash and we're strictly talking about, here's the budget for the first year and it'll be roughly the same for in future years unless the model is changed? Or is there some thought that certain assets will be precluded or there will be some, oh gee, this piece of equipment is, is not under the same rules, it's going to cost the town X to, to get this under the town? I mean, what's the thought there?
The ambulance and all its equipment, the new ambulance, I should say, the newer used one, and all its equipment, all our medical equipment, all the stuff for the rescue squad would become, it would belong to the town. I can't speak of the building. I don't know what, I mean, there's many options. The building could be turned over to the town as well, what does people want? It's supposed to, that is supposed to be a public safety building, used for public safety ser, you know, services and training. We had wanted to do a training room, but what happened was they built the building and then funds ran out and you couldn't finish, the building never got finished. But we have had some trainings in there. We did RIT training where you go in and, you know, rescue a person that is a firefighter in trouble. We had training for that. We've held meetings in there. We even held some of the fire truck meetings in there because the, I don't want to say their names wrong. Pepper Steppers and the Hot Mamas were meeting in the public safety, so we went over to the ambulance building and had our meetings there. So I just wanted to, you know, be a public, public safety.
Okay. So essentially it's, it's, yes, but except for that one unknown at this point. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
Sure. When you first came to us, one of the questions you had or one of the situations you had was duplication of services as far as paying insurance and workman's comp and whatnot on, between the rescue and the fire. Rescue pays it and fire pays it as well for the same person. Now you're kind of asking to become a separate department in the town. How is that going to fix the duplication of billing services as far as what we pay?
We're all still under the town management, it's one management. You pay an insurance on me, wouldn't it be under the town? The insurance be under the town? I mean-
I don't know how, that's what I'm asking. I mean, would it be, you know, would you still have this one person that's on two different things? It would be double-
I would say it's under town management that it would be under- I would say it's under town management that it would be under still one. I mean, we can find these questions out, we can go up to main municipal and ask them.
Okay. I'll, yeah, I'll put that forward and find out what the, I don't know if you might have an answer to it. So now you're looking to be a separate entity of the town, I mean, being a, another department, basically? That's what you're looking to do? Okay, okay. The ambulance association may wanna have a new vote, 'cause that's not the vote that the association took. The vote the association took was to merge with the fire department. So I think that-
And ask to merge.
Think that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, we can do that. We have a meeting coming up the first Thursday of the month.
I think that's all I had. I did take notes on the other questions that were asked, so we'll put those in legible format and forward that over to you.
Phil, you have any questions?
I don't.
No. Anybody else on the floor before we close?
If you're going to merge, you need to merge the two departments into one. That solves the problem that was just asked.
That's what I thought.
And most, probably the bulk of the calls that either the ambulance or the fire has are medical emergencies now. By combining the ambulance people and the fire department people, you no longer, they're all working for the town when they're working. So the insurance, you're not, you're not worrying about having double insurance or double workman's comp or anything else. What you're trying to do is cut the response time to a minimum. And if you become, the ambulance service becomes part of the fire department, and then you come to a mutual aid agreement with Shapley, then you stand a better chance of having people available when you need them. As I say, the ideal thing to do would be to hire a half a dozen full-time people and back them up with call people. But we're not in a position that we can afford that.
Mark, before you go, is our new system working for you?
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I say something for that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know how much you would like us to merge, and like I said, both, ninety-nine percent of us are on both. However, you speak about merging with Shapley, and with Shapley, the fire department and the rescue are separate, and I do not see any time soon them be coming together to merge. And our best bet for fire department, as well as the rescue, would be fire department merged with fire department, Shapley, Acton Fire Department, Acton Rescue with Shapley Rescue. Now, I can't say why, but the two of them, I don't see it feasible, like, I don't see it working. I, I like your idea, and I like it very much, but I just think it'll be harder to merge with the next town over if we say Acton Fire Rescue is merging with Shapley Fire or Shapley Rescue, because they are separate.
Peter?
Yes.
Do you have a mutual aid agreement with Shapley at this point?
The fire department, yes.
Rescue does, too. We have a mutually agreed agreement for rescue and rescue.
Any other questions? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
I know we closed the meeting.
Seconded. All in favor? Thank you, folks. We're gonna-